Okay, good evening, everybody. We're going to get going with the special meeting for this evening of the Water Push Control Authority. Again, my name is Chris P. I'm the chair. It is May 26, 2022, and I'm calling the meeting to order at 6:01 PM. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the special meeting minutes from April 25, 2022. Do I enter -- I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Ms. Dancho, do I have a second? Second by Mr. O'Brien. Any discussion on the approval of the minutes? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero -- eight zero. We have eight committee members, right? Eight commissioners tonight. Next on the agenda is a report of the town engineer. We're just going to go through the action items, Mr. Casey, so if you can give us the first one.
Yes, as it turns out, we weren't prepared to submit final change orders this evening, so we can do that next month.
So we don't need to do item 3A?
Item 3A, change orders.
Change orders. Gotcha.
And then item 3A, contract time extension. We want to surprise you that the contractor's still waiting for some materials to arrive. So although the pump stations are being finished up, he can't finish. So we have to extend the contract time. He's estimating August 31st that he would be complete 100%. So we'd like your endorsement to, you know, allow the contract, I guess approval to extend the contract time to that amount. There's no dollars associated with that time extension.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve item 3B, as stated by Mr. Casey, to extend the contract.
So moved.
That was Mr. Poisson. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Sutton, I heard. Any discussion for Mr. Casey on that? And I think he laid it out. And you said, John, it's a non-monetary change, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any discussion? Turn your mic on, Ms. Race.
I'm so sorry. You may have said it, but just curious, how long is it being extended for?
The contract would have allowed, it was already extended once for the same reason. So the current contract time for final completion is July 1st. So this would be a two-month extension to August 31st.
Oh, okay.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero. Mr. Poisson has joined us. John, next item, C.
Then we have a request for connection of an apartment building that's proposed at 24 Surf Avenue on the corner of Avon Street. It's a 45-unit apartment building. It's been approved by the zoning commission. They are looking to start construction, and they're seeking approval for the permission to connect that building to the town public sewer system.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve item 3C, as stated by the town engineer. Motion by Mr. Can. Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Dancho. Any discussion on this? John, you did say this was already approved by zoning, correct?
Approved by zoning. The data on the flow is presented in the attachment to my memo, and, you know, it's a fairly minor increase in flow. They're all pretty much one-bedroom units.
Gotcha. Any other discussion? Ms. Can.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Casey, in round numbers, what is the current capacity of our WPCA in terms of process? Are we at 50%, 70%?
You know, it's more in the neighborhood of, on an average daily flow point of view. You know, we were just talking about that. You know, during the spring, it's higher, so we kind of would use that as where we are, because even in the summer, it gets a little lower. But in the spring, we're pretty consistently higher, so we kind of use that as our cutoff. So I think we're about eight MGD in the spring, you'd say?
So is it specific to this? Yeah.
I'm...
Do you have a specific to this one?
A motion?
No, no. Discussion specific to this. Tie in.
Yeah, I'm trying to stay specific to this topic.
Okay. Continue.
So we're about at eight, you know, approximately now, and our design flow is at 11.5. So we have, on an average daily flow point of view, you know, capacity to allow our, you know, our growth to happen. Where we struggle is during rain events and high groundwater periods, where the, we're getting, you know, peak flows that are maxing us out. So we don't have, you know, you could say during any bad storm that we have very little capacity available. But, you know, that's very limited number of times that that happens.
So the question is, you mentioned Surf Avenue, limited flow, but we have a lot of other projects in the works, other apartment complexes, projects in Shelton. They're getting approved without the WPCA input, if you will. When should we make WPCA a prerequisite to approval?
So let me jump in. There's been no approvals without WPCA. There's pending projects that have come down the pipeline, but everything comes, in order to tie into the WPCA, they have to be approved by this board. We've made none thus far, so are there, and I'm not trying to cut you off, but specific questions to this item. Right.
They've approved this project in planning and zoning.
Yes.
And they're going to approve other projects in planning and zoning prior to WPCA.
Yeah, I mean, there's always has to be a starting point. So typically, planning and zoning, or if it's a wetland issue, sometimes they go to wetlands first. You know, make sure they can build a project, then they go to zoning and make sure they can build a project, and then they come here to see if, make sure they can tie in their project.
So the, just the question is, should we belatedly evaluate capacity in regards to each request, new development, if you will, or should we try to be more proactive with planning and zoning?
Well, we, so... So here's what we'll do. John, at one of the upcoming WPCA meetings, Greg, hold on.
Take a vote.
At one of the upcoming WPCA meetings, like we did a couple of years ago, we'll go through the flow capacity. But any other specific questions on this tie-in? No? Okay. We're going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? One opposed. Motion passes eight one. Next item on the, next item on the agenda is a report of the WPCA, Scrivener's error, if we can, Carol, WPC, Plant Superintendent. There's no action items, but Mr. Tom, Mr. Hyde, you just wanted to correct one Scrivener's error. You've noticed, for the record?
Yes, I just wanted to make one correction on the operating report. The second statement in the opening paragraph is that monthly NPDES permit limits were met. And the memorandum states that was met with just one exception. There was one exception. I had missed it, and I failed to go back and correct it, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you for, I appreciate it, and letting us know, and I'll have Carol item that. Next item is going to be to, item five, to establish and revise the charges in connection with and the use of the sewer systems. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Laura Dancho, motion to approve item five.
Ms. Dancho, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Connor. Discussion. So Dawn, if I could just have you come up and just, just give us a quick recap as to how the rate was calculated, please?
Thank you, Chair, Chairman Pia. So to explain the rate increases, back in, just looking at the date here, May of 2020, the project that John has been talking about, the pump station, the council authorized use of the state's clean water fund versus bonding because the rate was lower at 2%. And that project is approximately 20, 24 and a half million, our contract with the state that includes interest for the first year. And that project will be completed, and at that point, we have 20 years to pay back that funding. So that will start in the next year. And that's part of the reason for the increase is to start paying back the debt on that project, which is at a lower rate than the town could have borrowed for, under the WPCA. And then the other part of the rate increase is to cover ongoing capital improvements to the sewer system. So every year in the capital plan, you see projects listed for the sewer, and those come out of the WPCA's fund balance. That fund balance, over time now, has been depleted. So we need to start rebuilding that fund as normal course of operations. And we're also under order by the EPA and then through the state DEEP to continue to make sure we have enough money in that fund to handle emergencies and regular capital improvements that we need to do over time. So those two items make up the reason for the increase. And the town has been prudent in not increasing the rate over years while we've had the fund. And now that the debt is due, it's time to make those increases.
Okay, so I'll open it up. And Dawn, it was May of 2020 when we approved that note, I believe. I remember it.
Um, May, yeah, May of 2020 is when the ordinance authorizing the 24.65 in bonds or use of clean water fund.
So I want to just, so everyone, John, I want to thank you in particular, too, for at that time, because I remember we were talking, you were communicating with the state through tie-in bond, and they said, no one else has applied. Ask for all of it. So we got all of it in the entire state. And I remember the week before that, the Connecticut Post had a paper article about Bridgeport and how they're going to be looking forward to going and applying for these monies. So thank you for being on top of that, because 2% note, now sitting here two years, you know, with the amount of inflation, is, this is a steal. So I appreciate it. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Did you have a, Greg, I'm sorry, Jim?
I just want to, I think, because I met today with Mr. Timniak and Dawn. I want to clear something up, because the way I remember, the way I understand it, John, you have a memory, too. So I've got to go back, maybe the only other person's can. There was 5 million. We had this 2015, 2014, it was $5 million in reserves. And our concern was that we took the weight, the rate from 396 up to 425 to continue to keep that reserve level. So then, what I've just heard, and Dawn, I think, reiterated again, but I want to make sure I'm hearing it right, that there's 2.5 million that has to be kept, is frozen under an audit that came after that. That's correct, right?
Uh, yes, we have to keep a certain amount in the reserve.
So I, Chris told me today, 2.5 million. But, so in essence, when we had 5 million to work for, they cut it in half for emergency purposes. I understand why they did it. And we've been drawing down on the other 2.5 million.
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other, Ms. Can?
Hi, Dawn. What's the current WPCA fund balance?
Um, the, I don't, I don't have that in front of me. I think we discussed that earlier today, that it was the amount, the fund balance is made up of assigned and unassigned. And the unassigned is, I think, at a negative 600,000.
Okay, so the balance is, so the balance is at negative 600, which is untenable, if you will, for going forward? Most of the fund balance we used, was it, say, for the INI study, for maybe John?
So if you recall, every year when you have your five-year capital plan, there are items in there that are for bonding, for bands, for low SIP. There's, and then there are the sewer WPCA projects. And those come out of the WPCA's fund balance that Councilman Can is referring to. So over the years, those projects have been done, and they've depleted that fund. So now we have to replenish it. And this is, you know, a normal course, rather than bonding, we would use the fund for that.
So we're increasing rates. How much would we borrow from the state under the Clean Water Act? Just the cost of the project, once it's finalized? We wouldn't borrow up to the full 24 million.
So the project, the budget for the project is, that was authorized, is 22.79 for the project itself. And that, then the state adds on one year of interest into that total, because they're floating us over a year or two to get the project completed. And that's the 1.68, so the total comes to 24.469 million. That's what we are paying back over the 20 years at 2%.
So Caitlin and I did meet with Mr. Timniak and Dawn earlier today, and it was, it was a little hard at first to digest why we needed such a big increase. But the cost, the annual cost of paying back the clean water fund is approximately $1.5 million to the WPCA. And to rebuild the fund balance, we're suggesting, in this proposal, about a half million annual go back into the fund.
Right, because you, the council has approved projects that are currently in last year's bonding and this year's, last year's capital plan. And part of, I think, the previous capital plan and will, in this upcoming capital plan, have projects that still, you know, need to be done. Is that, am I speaking correctly on that, John?
Yes, we're always, you know, continually having to plan for replacement and rehabilitation of our existing infrastructure.
We've not seen an updated budget sheet for the WPCA. This was in our book that we just got. So under, we're not voting on a WPCA budget. We're just voting on a rate increase.
Correct. You're just voting on the rate, and then the budget will be updated and posted on the website.
So to repeat a bit of what we discussed this morning, we have commercial revenues and we have residential revenues. Those will go up if, when this is republished, by the new rate.
Correct.
There's a line here that says utilization of fund balance. In the prior years, we've used as much as 900,000, going back to 2016, which kind of goes to the point Mr. Connor made. But what we'll see next year under utilization, when this is republished, is hopefully a positive contribution back to the WPCA fund of a half million dollars.
Yes, over time, it will increase.
Yes, and starting this year, there's a $90,000 holding point here. I'm just looking at the budget.
Yeah, I'd have to look at the numbers to give you the exact number, but...
But it'd be closer to 500 than 90,000 going back into the fund.
Yes.
And on this next page, we have a list of expenses.
Yes.
We, aside from a new bond, you know, we were already paying off the WPCA improvements as a bond. And then we'll have a separate entry in here for the clean water bond and interest?
Yes.
Will there be any other changes to the expenses?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. And Tom and John, in terms of preventative maintenance, sludge costs, et cetera, what is in this book that was published a couple of weeks ago? You're comfortable that those will carry us through next year?
Well, Greg, we already passed the budget, though. So you're just talking, we already passed the budget.
I think these were reviewed at the workshop.
Yeah, we did these in the workshops.
This page is going to be reprinted. We've already passed the budget. You already passed the WPCA budget?
You passed the general fund budget, yes.
Right, so we're on...
So the two line items you pointed out are going to, to your point, going to be increased and revised based off tonight's rate revision.
And then in regards to the WPCA's budget, you already...
We're just passing the rates.
You're just passing the rates.
That's what tonight's purpose is.
And so my ask is, nothing else will change in here, other than, on the expense side, nothing else will change, from what you already approved, we already approved, than the addition of...
I'm not, we're not adding any additional expenses.
Okay. And the last question's related to the sewer revolving fund? Because I have, in 2016, the town took $1.5 million. 2017, another 700. They did that at a time when the CAFRA report said all funds were committed. And this morning, you know, we looked at how much uncommitted funds. So if there were no uncommitted funds in 2016 or 2017, how were we able to take the money and transfer it to the town? And why, if all the funds are committed today, can't we do the same thing of using? I know I'm going back to, prior to even Jay Wahlberg with this.
Well, I think we discussed this earlier today, Greg, that, first off, I wasn't here then. And secondly, that per the audit, we can only use unassigned funds. And that, that fund that deals with hookups to the system, the town has a program where people, we hook them up, and then they pay back over a period of time. So there are liabilities on the books, and then they're billed for those repayments. So until all the repayments are done, there's a liability on the books that prevents us from using that. What happened in the past, I really can't speak to at this point in time, and we did discuss that earlier today. So in terms, it doesn't really impact the actual rate, because that fund cannot be used towards paying down the debt.
Cannot be used to pay down the debt, but can be...
For the clean water fund.
Well, for the clean water fund, yes. But we're also adding half a million dollars a year to replenish the WPCA fund. And if all the funds were, you weren't here, but all the funds were committed or unavailable, because you have those two categories, because Exhibit C1 has been the same on the CAFRA report for many years, right? Even though the funds were unavailable and otherwise committed, somehow the town found the mechanism to transfer over $2 million out of sewer revolving fund to the general fund. So...
But hold on, Greg. I don't want to get into, I mean, this is all before all of us were there.
The weeds is, we've got this fund whose resources are supposed to be used to...
Well, hold on, hold on. Time out. I'm going to cut you off for a second, because the rate, what we're talking about tonight, which I think she clearly described, and again, everything you're talking about is before any of us were even sworn in. At least I was, in the administration. So we're talking about raising the rates, both residential and commercial, to pay a note that we all voted on to take out, eight out of 10 of us here, okay?
It was unanimous.
It was unanimous 10-0 vote, because it was a good move. And, let me finish, and we're replenishing the money we've been spending down, I think in a very good way, over the past four, four and a half years, because we've been putting money back into our infrastructure, which people have wanted us to do. So that's all we're talking about now. That's all we're talking about.
And there's an alternative to the rate that's proposed, which incorporates a half million dollar, or about 20% of the proposed rate, is to replenish the WPCA fund.
That's, she said that.
So I've not, I've stayed on track. I'm still with the rate proposal exactly per the agenda.
Okay. Do you...
We have, what is to... See, it's been my sense over the years that the way the sewer revolving fund is defined, is it's supposed to be used for capital projects related to the sewers. And if we found a way to take committed and unavailable funds and transfer it to the town in the recent past, I hope we don't do that again. But I also hope we can use, if that mechanism was valid in 2016 and 2017, it's kind of an open question, Dawn, predates your experience, but why can't we use it today?
Well, because if you, what Councilman Can is referring to, if you look at the audit, as we discussed this morning, Greg, with you, that, that fund does not have an unassigned fund balance for us to do what you're suggesting that we do, which is to transfer funds from that to the WPCA account. So it doesn't have that to be able to do what you're suggesting that we do.
But it didn't in 2016, and we did it anyway. It didn't in 2017.
I don't know what happened in 2016. I wasn't here in 2016.
Or 2017.
I wasn't here in 2017, so I'm only speaking about what we can do today. And I think I've been clear on that.
Dawn, you're the finance director. You're saying we can't do that today.
I'm saying yes, we cannot do that.
And I'm going to take your professional recommendation on that.
One last question.
Oh, go ahead.
We post the monthly reports on the website, whether it's the general ledger, and then there's separate enterprise funds accounts. The current April 2022 WPCA fund shows arrears of $8 million for residential collections and like a million-dollar arrears for commercial.
Yes. That's, that's not been reconciled yet. Our QDS system, which is quality data, that the tax collector's office uses, creates a report that then gets uploaded into our financial system. And the two systems right now are not talking correctly. So everything's being dumped into two accounts, and it's not being segregated properly. So we're working with them to fix that error. And I could certainly post something to the website to clarify that. But the bottom line on the revenues is correct.
Okay, so the money's in the bank. It's just not in the report, so to speak. So I'm...
I'm not sure how that's relevant to what we're talking about now, but...
Well, a couple, it's relevant to the public who may take the time to look online and see that WPCA is in arrears by 9 million bucks.
But she just clarified that, and I think it's a simple clarification.
Staying relevant to the topic.
Any other question?
Asking a question, alleviating residents' concerns, okay? It's not like the town's keeping that $9 million, and we're raising rates. It's just a...
Arrears is a revenue line. It's not a...
Yes.
Yeah.
But we know that sometimes collectibles don't come in at 100%. But we expect this collectible to come in at 100%.
This, this accounts for a collection rate.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Ms. Shake, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dawn, it's nice to see you again. Thank you for taking the time to speak. And you and Mr. Timniak, to Greg and I earlier, it's just a follow-up. With the proposed residential rate of 483.69, was there any opportunity, I think you said it was, in the tax collector's office, to go back because of the possibility of 17,000 users versus 20,000? Oh, be careful.
I have to do this to see, and then I have to put it back up. The, yes, I did discuss that with the tax collector's office, and the numbers were slightly off, but the rate still works out appropriately.
Okay, so there's no change?
No change.
Thank you.
There is one, one change, but I don't know if you want to discuss that right now.
Is there any, in a moment, because is there any further discussion before she has one more thing?
No, thank you.
No? Okay. Dawn, you, go ahead. You want to bring up one item?
Yeah, so the one item I would like to bring up is we have the rate with cents. And I would like for the residential, and I'd like to change that, round that to 484 rather than 483.69, because after thinking about it, the tax office told me that's, you know, we need an even number. We can't be keeping change on hand to make change for people that come in. So we just need, we've always had an even number, and I would like to change that.
Thank you. All right. So I need a motion to amend per the finance director's recommendation. All right, so I need a motion to amend per the finance director's recommendation. Just, Mr. Connor, can you just speak into the microphone for the record?
I'd like to make a motion to amend, to round a number up from 483.69 to 484 for accounting purposes.
For the residential only.
For residential only, correct.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Shake. Do I have any, just discussion on the amendment? No, makes sense, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes nine zero. Back to the original item, motion as amended. Any other further discussion? Nope, seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Chair, chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes nine zero. I will entertain.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Poissons to adjourn. Do I have a second? Mr. O'Brien, all those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes nine zero. Thank you all.